All right.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning Chairman.
Happy Tuesday.
We'll go ahead and get started this morning. We have two topics, but both are going to be a little bit, have the potential to be a bit lengthy. First of all, we'll talk about Charter 68. And Joe Thomas and Mike Fessinger will lead that discussion, and I'll give you a little bit of history on how that came up. And then I want to talk a little bit about Greater Wichita Partnership. There are two items on the agenda tomorrow. One is a presentation from the partnership on performance and other issues. Give you guys a chance to ask questions. And then there's a contract issue on there as well. So I want to spend just a little bit of time talking through that this morning and giving some history on the evolution of that contract. Charter 68 started out, we were going to crack that open several months ago just to do general cleanup within the ordinance. But some commissioners are interested in giving some local preference to some of our nonprofits here, specifically Envision and Starkey, and maybe others. So then we started kind of looking at the potential of doing that. And then Commissioner Cruz wanted this kind of, she was interested in the topic of local preference in general. So we backed it up even further. And Joe's going to talk through the whole concept of local preference here, whether the commission would like to migrate that way or not. He'll talk about pros and cons of doing that. And then, and then maybe talk about Envision and Starkey. And then at the end of the day, we need to do the general cleanup regardless of what is discussed here today. There's just some language issues in the contract that need to be fixed. So with that, Joe, step us through this and we'll...
Sure.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good to see you this morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're going to be discussing a local preference purchasing policy. So what that involves is a definition of that term, as well as what type of objectives are involved in enacting a local preference. There's different methodologies that one can use in order to put that in place. And as Tom Stoltz mentioned, the manager mentioned, there are pros and cons for a local preference. We'll talk about the issue of defining local. That is a big issue when it comes to a preference policy. We'll briefly look at a peer review, some of the local in-state entities, what they're doing, as well as some contiguous states that, what they're doing. We'll talk about briefly two Kansas statutes that deal with the issue of local preference and how they address it. And then we'll talk about the public procurement best practices, what the National Governing Board of Public Procurement has to say about local preference. And then we'll talk about some of the proactive measures that the county already has in place to ensure that our local vendors get the proper business and attention they deserve. So basically, a local preference establishes this legal binding preference in awarding contracts. So that means a local vendor may not be the lowest responsive bidder, but there are an opportunity to provide them with an advantage so that they are awarded the contract. And anytime you have questions, please let me know. What are the objectives of local preference? Well, of course, the big objective is to promote local businesses, to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in county purchases, the creation of jobs and wealth creation, and increase tax base, as well as what economists call the multiplier effect, keeping dollars in locally and then recycling those dollars as they become part of consumer spending. And that way, again, increases the tax base. Well, what are some of the methodologies to put in place a local preference policy? There are several. These are just a few of the more popular ones. One, of course, is the tie bid. That rarely happens. It's very, occasionally you get two bids, a non-local and a local, that tie. Of course, if they do tie, you award to the local vendor. Then there's what's known as the percentage. So in other words, you create a, some entities create a percentage of preference. So in other words, maybe a 3% or 1%, that they apply to the low bidder, if it's an out-of-state bidder. And to make that price would go up and then give an advantage to the local vendor who may not have the lowest bid. Next is a price matching. That's when the entity creates a band or percentage that a particular bidder, the low, the local bidder falls within, if they're not the low bidder, that allows them to match the price of the low vendor from that out-of-state vendor. So it's a percentage that allows them to then become, to match that non-local bid. The next one kind of correlates with, a lot of states have this with the tie bid, reciprocal. And what that means is that if a non-local vendor comes in, and they're from a state that has a special local preference, then our local vendors are allowed to apply that local preference to their bid in order to gain that advantage. So it's a reciprocity. So if a state has anything special, any state that has a reciprocal statute can then use that same preference in favor of the local. And the last one, not used very often, but it's a, just an absolute, that the county buys only from local companies. And later on, we can talk more about that. Any questions so far? Commissioner?
Yeah. Can you elaborate on what states actually have a statewide local preference law?
We find that the states that have the most are states that have indigenous industries. For example, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, West Virginia has mining, is their biggest, coal mining. So they have mining preferences. Up in the upper Midwest, there are some dairy preferences. So generally, you'll find industries that are particular to that state are sometimes protected. And so they put in a preference statute.
In terms of a state that just has like a statewide policy, they say, like, our surrounding states don't have anything? It would be like a statewide law that says that they would support local preference?
In a few slides, we'll, we'll show you a couple, like Colorado, Nebraska, and Oklahoma.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you very much.
So if we were going to buy an aircraft for the county, we could use local to purchase our own aircraft?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You buying one for the commission?
Yeah. Well, under the current charter, the answer to that would be no. We couldn't give preference. The way the charter reads today, no, we could not give preference to...
All right. Right. I figured that was a rhetorical question, I'm sure.
That does, that does make sense.
Yes.
Those states that preference their industry.
Yes, sir.
One other question, Joe. What about not, not state, but county or city policies? Do you look at those as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we're going to look at the pros and cons to local preference. Of course, this basically matches the objectives that we, slide that we looked at earlier. Keeping jobs in, you know, creating jobs or saving local jobs, keeping that money circulating within the community, hopefully attracting new businesses. And when you do that, you increase your tax base, acts as a stimulus for future growth. And then, of course, just the goodwill it promotes by having a local preference with many of the vendors. Now, when that happens, though, there are some unintended consequences or cons that can occur when you enact a local preference policy. And as I mentioned, it's unintended, but it does happen. One, of course, is the potential for increase of goods and services. So if you have a percentage allowance, generally it's found that the increase in the price of your goods and services will generally match that percentage of allowance. We talked about earlier reciprocal or reciprocity. What happens a lot of times are local businesses are not just going to look at Wichita or the state of Kansas, they're going to look at other markets to enter. And so when they enter those other markets, if there's a local preference here in Wichita or the state, those states would do the same thing we would do. They would, they would apply that preference against the local vendor. And so sometimes that can inhibit local vendors' pursuit outside the market area, or the local market area. And also what happens is that outside firms, when we use their bids in order to create the, the, looking at a percentage, a lot of times, they'll stop bidding if they feel like they're not going to get those bids and they're basically being used to, to help a local vendor be more competitive, they will basically not submit bids, or slow down in submitting the bids. And when that happens, unfortunately, encourages some or all local vendors to start raising their prices. The other area is the public perception. And in the court of public opinion, in some cases, it, it looks as if a small group of taxpayers may be receiving subsidies in favor of other business, or in some cases residential taxpayers. So that can create a public perception that's not wanted. What's also seen across the country is whenever these are enacted, there are disputes, bid protests, and in some cases lawsuits. And a big one, and I can let Mike Fessinger speak to this later, a big lawsuit in the state of Arizona in regards to this, but many times, it creates a lot of controversy. Again, the use of taxpayer dollars and subsidies instead of seeking the best value, or the low price for the taxpayer dollars that we spend. And especially when it's a pretty challenging, or the economic times pretty tough, we want to find the best value so our, our dollars stretch further. And then partly one of the biggest questions that comes up is the legal challenges as to who's local? How do you define a local vendor? And so the next slide, we'll talk about that, some of the areas that different entities and entities have looked at. And you'll find a hodgepodge variety of definitions as to what they feel is a local vendor. So here's some of the questions in defining local. Should a local vendor be a taxpayer living in the county, even though they may be, have a business outside that local area? Should they own property in the county? How long should they have an established business? There's cases where a big bid comes up, and so a outside vendor will come in and open a small sales office, or a little small distribution center, put a secretary or salesman in place and say, hey, I'm local, and I want to get, get that preference. Should businesses pay taxes to the county? How long should have paid, how long should they have paid taxes to the county? And what if they're located outside the county, but predominantly they employ Cedric County employees? Or maybe the majority of their stockholders are found in the county? Are they considered local? And so those are just a few of the questions, and there's probably others, but those are the questions that have to be addressed when, when figuring out a local definition for local preference. So here, Commissioner Howell, you were asking about the peer review of different communities. The top portion is the in-state communities that we looked at. For example, the majority, as you see, have no local preference. Johnson County, and we'll show this in the, I believe, the next slide, takes advantage of the state statute for reciprocity. And so they're considering enforcing that. The others have none. When you look at Lawrence, Kansas, their preference is that if the bid is 1%, no more than 1%, or $10,000, then the low, non-local bid. And these are, these are for bids only that are 50,000 and above. So it gets a little confusing. So anything under 50,000 is just low responsive bidder, regardless of local or non-local. When it gets above 50,000, they allow that 1% or no more than $10,000 difference where they can award to the local. The Hutchison has a percentage matching, and theirs is, I believe, 3% if it's less than, or if it's less than 10,000, or 5,000, if it's less than, 5% if it's less than 10,000, 3% if above is their percentage. Or they have the tie or the matching. And then there, here are some of the other states. Most of them are, are tie bids, which state of Kansas also have, has, or reciprocity. Denver, Colorado, it showed local preference for small business, but then it looks like it was rescinded, and they say they have no preference now. So very few, Omaha, Nebraska, has a local preference for small businesses. So we find that the majority of the in-state and out-of-state communities surrounding Wichita and the state of Kansas have preferred not to enact a local preference. Here are the two state statutes that were referenced. The first one, 753740, is dealing with tie bids. And like I mentioned earlier, very rarely do we find bids that come in exactly the same. But if they do, of course, preference goes to the local vendor. 753740A is the reciprocal preference. So again, any outside, non-local vendor that comes from a state that has a preference policy, that policy can be used by the domicile, by our state, in order to compete against that non-local low bidder. Hope I said that right. So in best practices, the organization that kind of governs public procurement nationwide made a resolution in 1016 in dealing and talking about local preference. And in that, they, of course, advocate the use of free and open competition as being the best method for public procurement. And again, they also stress that they want equal basis standing for all to participate freely in bids. And so they, they recommend an equal basis with no preferential treatment for anyone. They state that the practice of preferential laws or procedures results in reduced competition and increased prices, like we mentioned earlier. And so their resolution is that they're opposed to any preference law or practice because it would be an impediment to the free competitive market. What does Cedric County do? Even though we don't have a local preference policy, what is your procurement department, what do we do in order to assist with our local vendors? Well, one of the things that we do, and been very active in, is providing education for our vendors. One of the biggest issues we see our local vendors have is a trepidation of providing bids. Some of them are scared to death about how do I do bids? How do I do proposals? And so the city of Wichita, Cedric County, WSU, USD 259, we have gotten together at least every other month to discuss how do we reach out to these local vendors? How do we share our vendor databases so that if I don't have, or we, Cedric County, excuse me, does not have a certain local vendor, we would like to get them on board? What does the city have? What is USD 259 that we can share in a way of local vendors? We participate at least three to four times a year in what we call many matchmaking events, where we will look at a segment of business, and we will call in vendors locally and have a roundtable that we discuss, how do you do business with the county? How do you do business with the city? Or with USD 259? And so it's a training period that we sit down with those vendors. We help them get through the nervousness, or the, the feeling that they can't possibly bid, in order to assist them to do that. Because we want to, by expanding our vendor base, we get better competitive pricing. And so we want more local vendors. And then too, even though we have no set-asides or anything that's put aside for local vendors, we do have goals. Goals that we use to reach out and say, how much, how many, what percentage of bids are local vendors providing us? And how much percentage of dollars are we awarding to local minority and women-owned businesses? So that we reach out to those disadvantaged business entities to see what we can do to do our part in helping them, and again, helps us. It's a win-win. Currently, Cedric County, and this is a report we took out of our system for purchases, and these are not P-card, these are purchase related to purchase orders in 2019. And so since we don't have a good definition of local, we decided we put both together, in-state and Wichita vendors. And you'll notice that the purchases for 2019 almost totaled $106 million. Now, if you're looking at strictly Kansas-based, which includes Wichita and, and all the Kansas-based vendors, 67% of that, almost 67%, or about 71 million is spent with those vendors. If you were to take the subset of Wichita vendors, and out of that total number, it's about 48.9% or about $52 million that we spend with Wichita-based vendors. And so that basically concludes my presentation on the local purchasing preference policy. But if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe. And we probably do have a few questions? Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
So, thank you for your presentation. That was a lot to take in. So I have been talking, and, you know, like, last year sometime, Lynda Kazire kind of sent me some stuff as far as some purchases that were made on police vehicles. And so the, the lowest bid was $5,852 lower than our local preference bid. So we had Davis Moore, and she gave me the real estate taxes that they paid, which was like $244,000. So would this be something that would fall into, let's say, we decided that, okay, Davis Moore wasn't the lowest bid, but they were $5,000 under, or over, I mean, would that be a percentage, according to the methods that we could consider?
Yes. If it was decided to, to cover something that, like $5,000 over, you would have to figure a percentage, a band of percentage over the low, the low bid to capture those that would fall in that dollar amount. So that would be difficult to, to say how much, what percentage would have captured that $5,000, based on what that total amount was. So if you had...
Well, and then the other considerations, I guess, in reading, rereading this, the delivery times were quicker, there were some other things that were factored in, so it wasn't just a dollar amount. And I wonder how often does that happen? I mean, this is just one instance of a large-scale company paying lots of taxes here locally that we awarded a big contract for, you know, a, you know, a minimal amount above.
What's interesting, and mention the car dealers, is that there have been several that we've received from the state of Kansas, and they've involved dealers outside of Wichita. When we go in to do our due diligence and look at the number of vendors that have provided the quotes, our local Wichita vendors are included in that. But they weren't the competitive ones, or competitive to be awarded the particular bid. So we look at that, and state of Kansas, we see that a lot of times. There's been times when the local dealers have been the best, and there have been times when they've not been the low bidder. But it's interesting that they've been going outside the market, which we talked about earlier, in order to seek out business outside of the Wichita area. Now, when it comes to looking at factors like time, if the department lets us know that that time is of the essence, then we will probably go from creating a bid, well, we could leave it as a bid, but create a specification stating, your bid must meet this particular timeline. And that would definitely be a factor, even though another bidder may be higher. If that was one of the considerations, that would definitely be taken. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, there is a lot to consider here. I mean, I think anytime we can help our local economy and our local folks here, I mean, that would be obviously of great importance. But, I mean, seeing all of the other factors in play, I guess it would be, it's just a lot to consider.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah. Just, I was curious, the state of Kansas has a state use law, is that correct? It has some preference for disadvantaged companies in some, I'm not sure exactly what's, what's in that category, but...
Sure.
Talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Commissioner Howell, Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor, yes. So the state of Kansas has a law that allows them to prefer certain nonprofit entities that cater toward blind or disabled people. That would capture, for example, like Starkey or Envision. So that would not be something that's legal. That could be something that we could craft into our policy.
And does Wichita use that as well? And, and where are they on local preference policy?
Well, I don't believe that Wichita has a local preference policy at this time, and I'm not sure whether or not they're, they've got a bid preference toward nonprofits that we just described.
Okay.
So I can find that out for you. I wanted to, I apologize for interrupting, Commissioner. I just wanted to step in and speak a little bit more to Commissioner Cruz's question about local preference when it comes to an entity that, that maybe has a faster response time because they're local, even though they're not the lowest price. Charter 68 does allow you to make a, what's called a best value judgment, especially when we're talking about a request for proposals as, as opposed to a request for bid. You're able to say, under the current charter, look, I understand that this isn't the absolute lowest price, but there are factors to this purchase that are not just money-related, that instead are more about the service, or perhaps our staff's experience. From time to time, the bid board will recommend to you a purchase that's not the absolute lowest because of those factors, but you have the power to make those purchases, or make those decisions as well anytime. And you wouldn't really have to make any radical changes to the charter in order to do that. So the situation that you laid out, where, you know, we've got a, a local automobile vendor that, that didn't quite win the bid, but we know that we're going to get better service from them based on our past experience, you have the power now to, to make that decision.
They didn't have the power back then, though? Or they did?
Well, Charter 68, I think, came into, yeah, 2017 or 2016, they, they had the power at that time. So they could have done it.
Yeah. Commissioner Donald?
Thank you. So, speaking of the state use law, I think, I've been working on this. I, I know Lindsay and others can, can vouch for me that it's probably been three years now since I started. So you're telling me that we don't need to reopen this to start utilizing the state use law? Because that is absolutely contradictory to what I've heard for three years.
No, we would have to change Charter 68 in order to incorporate the content of the state use law.
Okay.
Right now, we are not able to do that, but we could make a change and do it.
Okay. Because I've had so many reasons, I've had so many excuses for why we haven't been using the state use law. I know Wichita might not use it, but I sure as heck know that USD 259 is very supportive of the state use law. Is there anybody here that can validate what I just said? Does anybody know that 259 uses that?
Yes, they do make use of the, of some vendors of state use, sir.
Thank, thank you. So I'm not just pulling facts out here. It's something that I think is important for us to let, we, we run the CDDO. We, we handle mental health issues through Calm Care. We need to be supportive of the groups and partners that support us, and the same constituents that have a lot of these same needs. And if we're unwilling to do that, I think that's a sad deal. We need to look at finding how many areas overlap the state use law, whether that affects Starkey, which is a phenomenal partner for us, whether that affects Envision, which is also a good partner. There are, there are a lot of CPRF with Bitco, does the digitization, I know, for the state, and also the school district. So, so there are numerous nonprofits that, that we can support without coming up with new actions by county government. So it would not, we're not looking for things for them to do. These are things that we're currently doing. So my, my desire to support our nonprofit and people in our community with ID and DD looking at, looking at that. So that, that's the first issue. So I'm a big proponent of the state use law. I, I worked on some amendments to that when I was in the legislature, so there is a lot of value to it. Other states have also varying forms of that to support their local industries as well. So it's, it's not something completely out of the box. But the other thing, and it just so happened this morning, I was on my way in, listening to KNSS, and I heard a commercial, Tom Ryan with Ryan Auctioneers, and he was talking about all this office furniture that he has, and it's beautiful, and you need to come in and look at it. I want to see, office furniture is one of the, it's kind of like jewelry, right? The markup when you buy it is extremely high, then when you find it used, it's, it's a fraction of the price. How can we look at ways, when we, we just had a purchase last Wednesday or the week before, for hundreds of thousands of dollars for office furniture? You can go to some of these auctions and get it for pennies on the dollar. How do we look at, as we're doing remodeling, looking at maybe buying used, or surplus stuff, or stuff off of Purple Wave? Is there a way for us to do that, to save the taxpayers money? And if not, I'd be interested to see how we could.
We could send a competitive solicitation to those entities. I think the biggest issue at times has been the, how much they have that's consistent with what the needs are.
Yeah.
But if, we have no issue with sending a competitive solicitation to them.
So, so, but I don't know how that would work, because it'd be, that they don't know what they're going to have. So, so I want to, I want to tell you what happened to me about five years ago. DCF was moving out of the state office building into the old postal center down at Pawnee and Oliver. My friend Matt Billingsley was Chief of Staff for DCF at the time, and he knew they were going to have to buy all these cubicles. And it was going to be like half... And it was going to be like half a million dollars. I told Matt, I said, "Hey, call my buddy Max, he has all these at the old Wichita mall." And he bought them for $5,000. And then he spent about $20,000 getting them assembled. So, he saved the state of Kansas over $400,000 by buying used cubicles. They're all used at DCF. I encourage, maybe we need to take a field trip down there. So, you can go see at the Pawnee and Oliver location, all these cubicles that were used in a storage unit. I mean, that was good responsive government. We need to look at doing things like that here, in my opinion. And I don't know how they jump through those hoops, but I do know that spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on office furniture every year is not what our main goal should be as a county. We should be diverting that money into things like public safety. So, I would like to, I'll take the county manager, and if you want to go, and whoever else, so that we can see this, so we can document what the state of Kansas did, so that we can look to see, how do we save money? And, you know, be more efficient with it, because the state of Kansas did it. And I'll go on record for that. So, if anybody has a Bible, it's a true story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I've got a quick question for you. And I don't know how much this is true, so I need you to validate it, or find somebody that can. But I was told that the state of Kansas, when they're doing vehicle purchases, they'll go out and do a bid to find the price of the vehicles. And if a certain dealer, say in Lawrence or someplace, gets that bid for the state of Kansas, then the manufacturer automatically gives them a lower price on all the vehicles that they buy then. And so, they have an advantage across the rest of the state for putting in bids, because they automatically get a discount from the manufacturer, because they won the state bid. Can you validate that?
I'm not sure what that, what the particular dealer's business model is, and I'm not sure, I just can't answer that, sir. I can try to research that if you'd like to.
Well, the only concern I'd have is if the state's doing something that causes our dealers here in Wichita no longer to be competitive against other dealers because of policies of the manufacturers, I'd be talking to the state, saying, "What are you doing? It's affecting our local businesses."
Let me correct myself as well. So, when we look at the state of Kansas, they do give us the pricing that each of the dealers submitted. And when, like Don Hutton or Davis Moore receive it, it definitely shows there that they have the lower price. And that is the price they invoice us for when they get it. Now, all, most of the lead agencies, lead agency means an agency that comes in and pulls resources, especially the big regional ones, will sometimes enact an administrative fee. But that administrative fee usually comes from the bidder, the dealer, or whoever's bidding on it, because they're getting the increased sales. So, when we do look at the state of Kansas, they are transparent. They do show us that this bidder had the lowest price, here is the price, here's the price you're going to get, and here's the dealer you deal with, even when we've dealt with some of our local dealerships. But behind the scenes, what state of Kansas may be getting, I'm not sure, if anything.
I've got a couple of questions, Joe. This concept of best value judgment, that, did you say that was incorporated into Charter?
Yes, sir.
In 2017?
Yes, it is.
And how, and so that would allow what, the case that Commissioner Cruz was talking about? So, you may bring us a widget that, or a big item that's $100,000. We see a local item that's $102,000. That would allow, you would present in this case to us, but if one of the commissioners or the commission was, is brought to light, that we feel like this is an area that you could do a best value judgment and take the $102,000 proposal, that's legal in our purchasing today?
Yes. Well, we have many of the departments do a great job, especially when it comes to software, when they look at warranties, total cost of ownership, or that type of thing.
Sure.
And they'll make a business case to us, "Hey, this takes half the time to implement, even though it's so much more." And so, that business case is accepted.
Okay. So, that's helpful to know, because have we used, since 17, has the commission, is it a commissioner issue, is it a commission decision, at the end of the day, on utilizing best value?
Well, it starts right at the department level.
Okay.
So, yes, department.
So, the bid board looks at that, can consider it, but at the end of the day, they can present the facts as outlined by the bid board to the commission for the final authorization?
Yes. They, yes, we can, each level has that opportunity of looking at best value.
And has that happened since 17?
You know, we've had times when bid board says, "Go back."
Bid board, where we had it where the commission overrode a bid board.
Oh.
That's all right.
I think of one occasion, can't give you the specifics, but, and I also know that bid board many times, not many, several times, has said, "Go back to the joint board. Here's a question we have."
Yeah.
"Yes, you're paying more, justify why you're paying more."
Okay.
So, they're very good about that.
Joe, can you talk a little bit, there are times, though, in the current policy, depending on what we are acquiring, where we are hemmed into lowest dollar, correct?
Right.
Can you talk, I think that's where we're getting with this discussion. Can you talk through the definition of what those processes are?
Yes, sir. So, it depends on whether it's a commodity versus something that's more specialized. So, as Mike Fessinger mentioned, bids are generally the instrument you use to address commodities. Commodities meaning something that has a specification, there's very little variation, and so basically, it's low bid meeting spec. And there's no other factor, time, or whatever, that's usually involved in some of those commodities. And then, there's what's known as the proposal, where if a department says, "You know what? We really, this is not a commodity, it's a service. We know what we want, we just don't really know how to get there." And so, then we put out a proposal, and then that proposal has technical criteria, performance criteria, and is given a set of points, so that when those proposals come in, each of those are read, examined, scored, and shortlisted. Now, there have been times when the ones who are shortlisted happen to be on the, maybe the top, mid-tier end of pricing, and other times, they've been the low end of the pricing. But on those occasions, price doesn't have to be the determining factor in who's awarded. So, I would say if it's a commoditized product, number two pencils, or office supplies. Many times, that's very specific, there's no little variation, we want the low bid, you meet the, you write, you're able to perform it, perform the way we have specified, and we take the low bid, and that's considered best value. Hopefully, that clears?
Well, not really.
Mr. Cruz's example, if it is a police vehicle, and you have a vehicle from Kansas City, and a vehicle from Wichita, and everything else is even, lowest bid.
Well, except for the delivery time on that one. I mean, that would be the factor, right?
Yes, if it's listed as one of the criterias, yes. That could be a best value.
So, in the case that you're talking about, we as the commission could not utilize the best value judgment? We would have to take the lowest price?
Again...
That's where...
The question turns on whether or not it's been a request for a bid or a request for a proposal. My assumption is when we're talking about vehicles with certain specifications, that would perhaps be a proposal.
Even pencils, whatever. I mean...
Yeah. Pencils would certainly come in under a bid, and at that point, 68 does lock you into the lowest price.
Can we look at incorporating, if it's the will of the commission, an overall best value judgment practice for all items?
It is applicable to all items on the charter. Well, it's applicable, it's applicable in the sense that a bid, like you mentioned, if a particular commodity, if it can be proven that this one has a better value, then we take that in consideration. But there are some items that just don't have that factor. But if the factor's there, it does allow us to set lowest and best bid, or best value selection.
So, last week, or when Commissioner O'Donnell was talking about the furniture we had into question, there were some office chairs that were like $400 apiece. I mean, an office chair is an office chair, right? I mean, some, I mean, not necessarily, right? I don't want people to take it exactly that way. But I mean, I think that that's kind of what, I mean, if a pencil's a pencil, where do we draw the line with, you know, the commodities versus, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, exactly. In that particular situation, it wasn't a matter of just buying chairs and placing them in a storage area for ourselves. It was involved installation, staging, some of the pieces of equipment were also fixed furniture, right? On some of the, was it tables or cubicles? I'm talking about ADFs. So, there was more factors than just buying the product per se. It was installation, staging, delivery, and so forth. Yes, ma'am.
Can you, so, back to Commissioner O'Donnell, can today, we can, we know the list of auction places in the town. Can we automatically include all of those in our procurement? So, whenever we send out a notice, they just get a notice? Because as Commissioner O'Donnell said, they don't, sometimes they don't know when they have it, or maybe they have a venue to go find it. Can we just include them in our bid notices? Right, Michael?
We, we're free to send competitive solicitation to any vendor, including the surplus.
So, you have a list today, so we're going to have a bid, this is where we send it.
Yes.
So, you can just add those.
We could add them.
That doesn't get us where Commissioner O'Donnell wants to go, though. Giving people notice that we have a product out that we're trying to acquire, we can surely do that. Commissioner O'Donnell and other commissioners have talked to me in the past about giving for 501(c)(3) system of nonprofits. And let's use Envision, for example. They come in with a little bit higher bid for trash bags, for example. We want the ability, under the charter, to accommodate that. For, and we have to be very specifically say what companies those are, so that we don't have a total local preference sweep through our policy here, which I think Joe has talked about the negativity of that. We want to give some preference to specific nonprofits who are lined up with county mission. That's what we need, that's what we would need the vote to, or the commission to agree to do.
Okay. Well, if we incorporated the, I hate to go back to the quote, the best value judgment, if we had that in place, could we use that instrument in the Envision case to...
I didn't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner, is that...
That's all right. Yeah, I agree. I don't know the best way to get there, but I do know that we do have some people that I consider to be experts that live in Sedgwick County, that would know how to help implement that. Mark Dugan, I know, crafted a law of the law, the state use law, but I've heard numerous times that 259 is a big proponent of the state use law. And so, maybe it'd be worth it for us to talk to them, to see how they implement that, and who they use, because I understand they're a model for that. And in fact, most school districts across the state use the state use law.
Commissioner, I've crafted just a proposed manner to incorporate the state use law into Charter 68. So, we do have some language knocked out that would do this. As opposed to the question of using your powers under the best value judgment to, you know, sort of graft the state use law into Charter 68 that way, I don't know that I would recommend that. I mean, the best value judgment, you would have to, I understand that there is some thought that you are getting a really good value when you buy from a nonprofit and everything, and I'm not disputing that. But I think that it's easier to get there on a case-by-case basis, if we amend the charter, to just specifically enumerate this. Best value judgment is referred more, is, in my view of the charter, really more for a situation that Commissioner Cruz laid out, where we, there's something that we know about this specific purchase, where it just makes more financial sense...
Right.
...to the county to go with the, maybe the second bidder.
Okay. Well, I'm familiar with, and I think Melody across the street is, and the manager is similar with what you're talking about. A local preference as a policy is quite difficult. Your slide nine, that just even said all the, what is really local is a whole can of worms, that's tough to do. And it sends a message, reciprocity is another issue, item. So, I'm not real comfortable delving into that area, but I think if we can do, if something is simple, the state use law, find out how USD does it, allowing best value, I think, I recall one occasion out of, we get bids every week, same at the city, I think one occasion, we pulled one and had a really hard discussion, it was about oil and lubrications. And sure enough, we as a council at that time, made a decision to go a different way than what was recommended. But it was after careful consideration, and maybe even reconsideration, might even have come back a week later, or something like that. So, I think responsibly, I think we would all like that option, on the rare occasions that it ever happens. I don't know how you all feel, but I think that's kind of where we're leaning. Does that help give guidance?
A little bit. I mean, we've got something, let us check with schools, and then I want, Mike has got some options drafted for us. It may just be a situation, let us do a little bit of research, we may do two-two ones with you, just talk about policy options.
Sure, okay.
And then we'll push this to an open meeting.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yeah, I don't think we have.
Yeah. Commissioner?
Yeah. I can't remember what committee it was on, but we talked about state use law when I was a legislator, one of the committees there. I can't remember exactly what the committee was, but if I understand correctly, I think that schools are actually mandated by state law to use the state use catalog. And unless there's a price differential, but I think 10%, or there's a threshold that gives them the right to go outside the state use catalog. But there's like, I believe it's a 10% threshold, and you can probably go validate that. I believe schools are mandated that they have to, they have to purchase from the state use catalog for those items that are offered through that catalog. I would also, you know, I think the theory behind the state use catalog is that by employing the ID or DD community that produces a lot of those products, the employment obviously is better than state support necessarily through programs that might, you know, might help these folks that may be unemployed otherwise. And so, the state connects those dots, and I think they would rather see those folks employed, you know, quality of life for them, they're also paying taxes and stuff. So, there's, they connect a lot of dots to, I think, to make a pretty good argument that the state use catalog actually is, isn't really costing the state money to do, to implement that policy. But I would also just say, there is an issue of quality. You know, sometimes some of the products in there are not the same qualities we would get elsewhere. So, talk about best value, we have to understand there's, sometimes there's a quality difference, a quality difference. At the end of the day, we need our, we need what we need, and we need it to be good quality that we expect. So, I'd like to have the opportunity to, again, use the best value theory, you know, consider state use products where it makes sense, but I'd like to also have the latitude maybe not to use those if there's reasons why we don't feel like that's good, you know, the best value to the county. And then, it seems like we ought to be able to, as we're talking about this, there's no timeline to do this. There's no, we're not under some time pressure to make a decision on Charter 68. This is something we're cracking the can of, we're cracking this can open, but we don't necessarily have a timeframe to end this discussion, I don't believe. So, wouldn't it be smart for us to estimate the costs and the benefit for, I guess, the community that would get those benefits? In other words, how much money, how much out of the money we spend in a year, how much of that is for products that are in that catalog? And what would be the additional cost to the county, had we, had we used the catalog? What would be that additional cost to the county? And that's a hard question, but wouldn't that be a good question to be able to guide this discussion?
Yes, sir. A couple of years ago, we did that. We took and made a comparison between our current contracted vendors and the state use vendors that are listed. And some of the products was a considerable difference in favor of regular competition. But we can do that again, if needed.
I think we ought to have that data as we discuss this. And I don't think we're in a hurry necessarily, so I think it'd be reasonable for us to have that data before we go any further, trying to make a decision on what we should do here. I think we ought to have that data at our fingertips. And I think there are some governing bodies that have placed themselves, you know, as a mandate, under the state use catalog. And I think most governments have not done that, but I think I like, I kind of like this idea of giving us the authority to do that, but not necessarily the mandate, because I like the idea of best value is kind of being our philosophy of the county. I personally like that idea better, but that's just where I'm at. Thank you.
The, I'll speak to that briefly, Commissioner. The proposal language that we have right now has a purchase from the, you know, from, let's say, Starkey or Envision, being recommended by our purchasing director as coming in under this exemption. It's, it becomes one of the newest exemptions in the charter resolution. So, what would happen is Joe would exempt it from competitive bidding, but it would nevertheless still be put to you for ultimate approval. So, it passes over Joe's hurdle, and then comes to you to approve, and at that point, you can do as you wish, buy it or not.
And I guess, it depends on how deep the dive. And I guess, it depends on how deep the dive. I think when a commissioner asks for something for three years, and I can validate that Commissioner O'Donnell's been asking for this for three years. I think the Envision, because today, right now, Envision and Starky are missing out on some county business. And I think that's, we could reconcile that a bit quicker, getting a cost analysis somewhat that would maybe cost. So if the dive is just that shallow, I think we can move relatively quickly. On some of this other deeper discussion, you're right, Commissioner, I don't think we should race to do that. I think we should get proper data around. But I do think we ought to try to move somewhat quickly on cleanup and addressing the nonprofits.
Commissioner O'Donnell has a comment?
Thank you. I just sent a message to my friend to get us all the 2020 state use catalogs, so that the commissioners and some, you know, key personnel can see all the different organizations that are inside of there. Because some of them outsource to larger companies, like it would look like an Office CPO catalog. So that's not really what's in their wheelhouse. We're talking, what do they actually produce? What can they actually do, whether it's the digitization, like they do, is it Bitco?
Bitco.
Yeah, Bitco, or the trash bags in Envision. There are certain things that we know are manufactured, or the work is done in the state of Kansas. That's what I'm more interested in. So I'll get those to first. I'm sure we can get them this week, so that the commission can look through it before your 2-2 one meetings. And then we can kind of discuss, like, if it is a local, because if it's a non-for-profit that's in Cherokee County, that might not be as important to us as a Sedgwick or a Butler based not-for-profit. So as long as we can continue this discussion, that's all that I really wanted, and then see where we land. Because it is such an important feature of what we do through the CDDO. And I know we gave money to Starky just a couple months ago for their new building out over in my district, and we're still grateful for that, the $25,000. So I know we're currently investing in all these not-for-profits anyway. This might be a way for us to circumvent, just giving them cash donations in the future, and more just partnering with them on purchasing products. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
The last thing, second thing I want to talk about, Commissioners, is the Greater Wichita Partnership is coming in Wednesday for their, they come in twice a year or so to talk about their work and what they do for the community and what they're doing for economic development in Wichita, Sedgwick County, and the 10-county region that they represent. The second item after their presentation is the contract. And I just want to give you a little bit of a landscape of discussions that I've had with some of the Greater Wichita Partnership leadership. First of all, the city of Wichita currently is contracted with the partnership through December 31 of 2022. So the partnership had asked for a contract which would mirror the city of Wichita. And they do this for a couple of reasons. They're like anyone else out there, the zoo or exploration place. We have multi-year contracts with those entities, and it gives them the ability to have stability within their organization and to allow them to properly budget and plan for the future. When, so the reason we went forward with a proposed multi-year contract is what the contract is for Wednesday, for just those reasons, to give them some stability. And also, I'd also talked, and I was a little bit frustrated with the partnership in the past with what we call one-offs, where they would come in and want $25,000 for this study or $50,000 for that study. And I, one of the reasons that we bumped the budget from 300 to 400 was to stop the one-offs from coming in and to give us stability in our budgeting process as well. So that's the landscape of what we have coming before you on Wednesday. I know we had some robust discussions with the Greater Wichita Partnership people that were here. And I just wanted to take a few minutes in this open environment to have discussion between commissioners, if so, and to give you a little bit of the backdrop of why we're trying to work with the partnership. It is throughout our strategic plan, the concept of partnership, the concept of job diversification, the concept of workforce and economic development. So it is consistent with the Sedgwick County mission to have some facet of economic development work. Lindsay can talk to all of the budget items, and there are not that many that we do to promote and facilitate economic development. But the Greater Wichita Partnership is the lion's share, that is the big chunk of that. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions, or if you want to have any discussion, or if you just want to go for it tomorrow in the meeting and have the discussion there. So.
Commissioners have questions, comments?
I'm still waiting for their list of their board of directors. I think this is the fourth time that I've asked for it now. My main concern is, you know, when we talk about, I mean, this is 1.2 million, right, over three years?
It's 400,000 a year, yes.
Yeah, so I guess I just, I do absolutely see the value, but I would like to have a really robust conversation that isn't 30 minutes to an hour about each one of these items. So as far as job diversification, their global strategy, talking about what they're doing for each sectors, you know, I did have a short conversation about Park City. What are we doing for Valley Center? What are we doing for Mays? What are we doing for, you know, we talked 10-county region. But for me, it's about my district and what are we doing for the folks that I represent. So that's kind of the conversation that I would like to have. Like I said, more than just a 30-minute shuffle-through conversation when we're talking about $1.2 million.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for that. So I have a concern, and I've heard this from a lot of people outside of the GWP, is that they've really grown in numbers, right? We know they keep expanding offices and doing more stuff. But I understand they have, I don't know, maybe six full-time people doing marketing and communications. Is that, do we know? Is that correct? And what's their growth been with staff that would seem like support staff, but maybe just a lot of it? Because I don't want to give another $100,000 if it's just to get another marketing person. Like, I want to know there's actually going to be something more that they're currently doing than they're currently doing if we're going to give, I mean, that's a pretty strong increase year over year. I mean, to go from 300 to 400 just in a moment, are we getting anything additional for that? Because the only thing I heard is they're going to promise they're not going to come and ask us for another $100,000 for another project, Wichita, or another Riverbank Legacy project. Like, that just concerns me, especially when we were looking at that budget last week in our forecast, that it looks like we could be deficit spending next year. You know, we need to be more cautious about just throwing money at something if we don't know exactly what we're going to get. So, thank you.
I don't know the organizational chart answer to your question, but we'll get that, and I'll have.
It'd be really interesting if we could see it, like, over the last three years, what's their growth been in staff? Because that's a complaint that I've heard. And granted, I've heard it from people that don't have, I think it's from biased individuals, but it doesn't mean it's necessarily wrong. And it was so quick last week. In fact, they shuffled this out as we were still talking. So like Commissioner Cruz said, 30 minutes isn't enough when we're debating our entire EcoDevo policy and $400,000 a year. 30 minutes isn't going to cut it. So, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Al.
Thank you. I, the first time I heard about the three-year contract was, I think, on Friday. And I guess I have some concerns about that. You know, the county in the past has approved some of these longer-term funding contracts, but it hasn't been without controversy when you try to change that contract. It sometimes gets a little dicey and politically difficult. So we just heard on Thursday and Friday that we've got, I'll just round it up, we have a $20 million challenge to the county to figure out over the next few years. Okay? We saw that Thursday and Friday. And that may not really solve all of the problems. We even, some of us concluded during those days that we're either going to have to increase revenue, i.e. taxes, or cut spending somehow to resolve that. And that's going to be a very complicated and difficult discussion going forward. So increasing the funding to GWP, I don't have as much concern about that in light of the fact that we don't provide revenues to REAP right now, and we just cut SKEAD off this last year. In my opinion, GWP is our major arm of economic development. But having said that, I do think that the, you know, trying to eliminate the one-offs is also good. So I don't really have a problem with the level, the dollars per year, but I do have a problem with a three-year contract. I think in light of the fact that we don't know, you know, even Jeremy Hill says, you know, recession could be around the corner, we're not sure. Well, what happens if it is around the corner? Signing a long, a three-year contract to us really ties our hands. And I know there's a clause that says you can get out of this, but that's difficult. And to the extent they like to have the stability in the budget going out three years, I, who wouldn't want that? Of course they want that. But I would tell you, the third year of that three-year contract, they're no better off than they are right now. So what I think they would prefer, in my opinion, if they really, if they would think this through and really go back and, I guess I gave them a new idea, I talked about this with them on Friday. How about a two-year contract? And what the two-year contract would do is, in a year from now, we would essentially reconsider another two-year contract that would repeal and replace that two-year contract. So every year, they would have two years. So in other words, every year, we would take definitive action by the commission that would extend their contract by another year. And rather than, see, right now, if I understand correctly, we don't have a contract for 2020. And the years passed, we would be, at this time, signing a one-year contract for current year. And to that, I understand their challenge, you know, planning-wise, that's not good for them. I get that. If we signed a two-year contract that handled 2020 and 2021 today, or say this next week, that gives them stability out, you know, more than a year. In this case, it'd be about 22 months' worth of stability. And then a year from now, we could consider, if you will, a new contract for two years. We'd do that again. It would repeal and replace the contract we passed this week, or next week, or whatever it would be. To me, that gives them some planning stability, and it will always be there. And that ought to be enough. But if we enter into recession, if this 737 MAX, I heard this morning, they're not going to fly now to August, potentially? The financial forecast is not as good as I would like. And whether or not we should mirror the city of Wichita, I think that's arbitrary. I think this idea actually would be better than their idea. In my opinion, a rolling contract would be better. I wish they would take time to actually, as a board, discuss the idea. So I would like to see us put this off and not deal with the contract on Wednesday. Let's let that, the board, if you will, have a discussion about a rolling contract. And I think for us to have a discussion about their accomplishments on Wednesday is fine, but for us to sign a contract, I'm not ready for that. I think we need to go back and talk about this more. And.
I can go say plenty. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it.
For the past three years, I've said over and over again that we need an umbrella organization that looks at economic development. And we need to quit firing these single shots out, saying that REAP can do this, and SKEAD can do this, and the Global Trade Organization can do that. We need one organization that is solely concentrated on economic development. They have all the tools that they need in order to be able to do that. Here in Sedgwick County, we've got Brent is our economic development guy, and he's got a full-time job. That's not his full-time job, economic development, but we kind of put it on him. Over in Wichita, it looks like they've got a couple people that are more full-time doing that. So since we don't have the expertise here, we're overtasking one individual to do more than one job. I think that we need somebody like GWP to be that umbrella organization that takes a look at economic development. And I think we're going the right direction. I told them Friday, when I talked to them, that if we do agree with this contract, that don't come back to us with these $40,000 requests, these $100,000 requests, because they're not going to happen again. And I put them on notice that if we do this, that's it. I will not vote for additional funding to go to GWP. So I think that we can do this with, in light of them being our umbrella organization, and we quit providing money to all these other things, we're not going to do that anymore, at least I'm not going to vote for it. So I don't have a problem with us moving forward with this contract with that stipulation that they are our economic development arm for Sedgwick County.
Okay. Well, I think you're hearing a lot. My personal recollection is just a few short years ago, the economic development team was, didn't even have the private sector involved or invested. I think they're putting two or three times what into these funds. So a few years ago, a company would come, knock on the door at the city of Wichita and embrace Sedgwick County, and our own staff would try to churn through a deal. And of course, then when the clock out at 5 o'clock and take care of it, start working on it the next day. This group is so involved. So when they invented this, it just transferred to what Commissioner Dennis was talking about, is privately-run, an organization to do this. And relieved government from being actively involved, but being financially involved at a smaller number. So I hear what everybody's saying, but if we're, and you can even have elections to where a body may not feel compelled to want to support anything in economic development. And then that becomes problematic when a government agency is against the will of what a community might want to do in terms of economic development. So I don't know if the number's exactly right. I don't know if the staff's exactly right. I don't know, you know, it's been three short years where they've expanded their, the region, and helped put the region on the map nationally for site selectors, regionally with embracing other counties, and maybe had an impact that's very positive, that's noticeable, at least in Topeka with the former governor and I believe the current governor. So that didn't, all of that exposure and success of helping put the region on the map was not a result of our, of our two government entities, the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County. It was a result of what they've been doing. So if we don't want to support this, I believe that those that do not want to support need to probably think deeply about what would your option be, and what would your organization look like? And are you really ready to, you know, take all the 1-800 calls and things like that, from my perspective? It may not be a perfect model, but I can tell you, it is way better than what it was five to seven years ago. And I think they're making progress. So I think we just have the presentation tomorrow and let people comment, and if, whatever the will of the commission will be. So, okay?
Yep. I'll be answering.
All right. Anything else? Any comments? Any additional comments from, yeah?
Thank you. I've got two questions. One is that three or four weeks ago, I got a call from the Fair Board at Chenee Fair asking for an additional $10,000. We gave them $100,000 to build a building, or to the point where the building's going up, they can't afford to do the wiring for it. They're going to provide the labor, they just need to purchase the supplies. We've already invested $100,000 in this. I just need to know where we're at, because they keep calling me and saying, are we going to be able to have this? And I don't have an answer for them.
Very good, sir. Do you want to talk to that, or? We had, you and I talked probably almost a month ago now about this. I did walk the halls with other commissioners, there were discussion, a couple commissioners had a question of what would City of Chenee bring in forward to this. Valerie has contacted the person she has worked with throughout this project, and it's different than, I think, the person you're talking to with that question of what's the City of Chenee bringing to this process? And I don't know that he's given us an answer yet. I will tell you, it's February, if the idea is to have that building up and running by fair time, time is a little bit of the essence here. I will check with her today to get the most recent update, if any. I don't know that the commission, I don't know that anybody spoke negatively about it. I think there was just some question of what's the City of Chenee bringing to the table, since it is, a lot of it is, that fairground is a split between City of Chenee park property and the fair actually owns some property also there. So I would like to be able to report back to the commissioners that asked about City of Chenee stake in this, and get them an answer, and then we'll move it forward, sir.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to provide an answer to them, because they called me and I don't have an answer. Do you have something to comment on that?
Yeah. So the manager's right. So the manager's right. So when, because they actually come for a couple of years and asked before we gave them $100,000, and they came to our meeting and said, hey, we won't come and ask you for any more money, $100,000, we'll get it done. So I felt like it was very reasonable to come in and say, hey, I'm good with giving them an extra five if they can get it done, and then their board or whoever can go and find the rest. And that, that's what I told the manager. But when they came to our meeting and said, $100,000 will do it, we're going to do it all by ourselves, and they come and ask us for more money, it is a little, just to me, frustrating, because it was, it was very charitable for us to give them $100,000 last year. So that, that was my, that's my issue, and feel free to relay that to them. But I was, I was absolutely fine with meeting them in the middle if they found that other $5,000, whether it's from Chenee or private donors.
This is the first I've heard of this at all.
On the $10,000?
On the $10,000 for Chenee. So thanks for the information.
I've got a second issue that I'd like to bring up, and we need to report back to the Commission on exactly what this thing is that Secretary Schwab is proposing. Read in the newspaper today that we have to have 30 standalone machines, I believe, and Tabitha goes on record saying that we don't have power for that. I need to know why that they need 30 standalone machines? Are these going to be plugged in all the time? They talked about they can't be on our network. I don't have, Wes is going to have to get involved in this, I think, because I don't understand how that, over five or seven years, whatever the lifespan of these 30 machines are, how you keep them up to date if you never hook them to a network? Because you've got machines that need updates. I can understand his concern about that, he said something in there about somebody can be playing on their computer in a different office and think they're logging on to get a free Xbox and they get a virus. Well, if we're not locked down well, Wes is not doing his job, and he's doing a great job. So we have, we just spent thousands and thousands of dollars to make sure that our system is secure. I, I need to report back on what we're doing wrong and what these machines are going to do. 30 machines, evidently that we're not buying enough to put out the polling sites. We're going to have 80 or so polling sites out here. What about those machines? I am totally lost at what his concerns are and what he thinks that we need to do here as far as network, as far as hardware, as far as interfaces. We need a report back.
I don't see a habit that here.
She's not here? Maybe put that on a workshop?
Sure.
Or staff meeting, update?
And sooner the better, probably, on that, right?
Right.
Okay. Very good, sir.
I would like one more piece of data as well. The number of voters we expect on Election Day divided by the number of machines deployed, compare that number with Johnson County. Same data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, not talking about this?
No, not, I just got, I just printed it off.
Okay.
You can ask.
Yeah.
I just got printed, I didn't get it.
Okay.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, hit the.
I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, so the number of, this is a stat. Call this in.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Schneiders, the Deputy Election Commissioner. We are in talks with the Secretary of State as far as what, what we need to accommodate his request. There was a discussion last week, and there'll be more forthcoming as far as what he's wanting. But essentially, he just wants to lock down the software system that we use for the national, for the statewide database. And in order to do that, his theory is, we only have a computer that will connect to that database and it does nothing else. So currently, the reason why we would need 30 workstations, because of the temps we have to bring onboard, plus all the full-time employees, we'll now have two computers, a county computer and just this database computer. The two won't be able to speak to one another, and it does affect our processes, because right now, we open a Word document, we can pull an image over from that database to send a letter out. That won't be able to happen. We have other hundreds of processes that we do that will now have to be rethought about, and that is under consideration. But we are, we are out of outlets. We have no way to plug in 30 computers and all their components. Right now, we are completely tapped out in bandwidth, so that would need to have Wes involved in getting us all that information. So they are putting together a list of what we would need to accommodate the request, and once that is put together, Commissioner Lehman will be in Topeka, many conversations about this. They're wanting to have this happen by the primary, so it's a very aggressive agenda to make this happen.
So are these computers, we maybe get, are they, is this kind of like a law library, LexisNexis, where they, they give you a computer and this is all the data in it, and there's no feed in or out? It's just, this is your?
Correct. It would disconnect to the cloud software. That's all it can do.
And then if they wanted to?
But it is using the county internet.
But if they wanted to update something five days later, they send you a new thumb drive, or they send you?
They are proposing thumb drives, which we know Wes has a policy regarding the thumb drives.
I'm familiar with how LexisNexis works in a law library, and it's really archaic, and it's not.
It's the execution, we're not understanding how this will work.
As soon as you turn it on, five people register to vote, so it's outdated, because the data, the way you're telling me is, it is what it is, that date, timestamp, so new registers aren't in there without an update to that wholly-owned database. You don't even have to agree with me if I'm saying this the wrong way.
Well, no, that's our question. We don't know how this is going to work, we don't know how this will be implemented, but we do know that based on what we've seen so far, it will greatly affect our processes.
To keep it isolated, yeah.
And we may have to go to second shift workers, we may have to ask for more temp workers, we just, we don't know yet.
Okay. But these machines are then going to hook to all these tablets we've got out in the, at the election station?
No. No, they would just connect through the cloud to the software. We call it Elvis. It's the voting system that we use.
So what's going to connect to the polling places?
Great question. We don't know that information.
What a mess.
It's a challenge. It's definitely a challenge.
And he throws all of this at us here within an August primary coming up?
Correct.
We don't know what we're doing, we don't know how we're going to do it. These 30 machines are still going to have to hook to the internet, correct?
Through the county network, which we are on our own standalone portion of the network, so we've already taken that into consideration and have secured ourselves. We've insulated ourselves from the rest of the county, as far as I've been told.
Well, we've got virtual networks all over the county, so there are all kinds of people who are isolated.
Correct.
I can't figure out why we need 30 machines that are isolated when we can already isolate the machines.
It's a great question. We presented back to them multiple questions, how this would be accomplished.
Who's paying for it?
They received a grant, $8 million grant.
And that's going to cover 105 counties?
I don't know. There's been more questions than answers at this point, but we've been told it's a very aggressive timeline, and to turn in our questions, and they'll try to resolve those as soon as possible. Hopefully by next week.
Well, we need answers as soon as possible, too.
I agree.
Especially the impact that it's going to have on Wes's operation, the impact it's going to have on the voters being able to vote.
And the budget, potentially.
And our budget.
And, and how we will be able to provide electricity and internet bandwidth is our big concern with this. Without electricity, those computers are worthless.
We've already, we'll throw this on the stack along with Odyssey software rollout as far as, and we've already given the downtown, or the downstairs conference room as the war room for that project. I don't know if we have to war room this project, it'll have to be out of Tabitha's shop, but we'll, let's, let's get the Commissioner back in town and have her come present at a staff meeting, and hopefully get more information as it's rolling out and come and give you guys a?
But you can't just come and tell us we've got a problem. We need solutions, we need to know what steps we've got to take between now and August to make this thing happen.
Right, but if she doesn't know that, I mean, we have to, we have to give some grace in handling all parts of this.
We have, between now and August, figure out what the impact is going to have on our budget, what kind of equipment we're going to have to buy, how we're going to wire this into the network. She has to have some answers pretty quick.
Right, and I totally get that. I just wonder how we can get to that solution. We have to work towards solutions, all of us do, and figure out ways to empower and support our election commissioner, because at the end of the day, really, all of it's going to fall on her shoulders, no matter who's telling her what to do. If this election goes crazy, she's the one who's going to take, she's the one who's going to be in headlines. And so it's our responsibility to support her in whatever shape or form that, that looks like. And if that means figuring out ways to work with our Secretary of State, then we have to do that. As much as I don't personally agree with this, I want to see her succeed. I want to see a smooth election. I don't want to be in the headlines like Iowa. I want to be, you know, I want to make sure that we have a supported election commissioner with no undue stress on her shoulders that then trickles down to other people and makes things all sorts of haywire. So I really, I understand, and I, I just want to get this conflict resolved so that we can have a successful Sedgwick County election.
But that's why I'm asking the question today. It was in the paper today. And so I can't wait until tomorrow to ask the question if we can start working this now. If we're going to be successful, we've got to start planning.
Exactly, yes. I, I'm glad that you brought it up.
Voting starts in five months.
We'll get the Commissioner back in town, and we'll, I've already told her, we'll do whatever we can to support her with staff or whatever she needs to run a successful election. So when she gets back, I think what we owe you is information, and I think it might be a couple of weeks before she can get her mind wrapped around it, and then we'll come back and present to you.
Anybody else? Electeds or others? Okay, Tom?
On a positive note, Linda Gazire's back in the building today.
All right.
All right. Very good. Is she having a staff party and stuff, balloons and?
Hey, you and I, we're going to go take them down.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for the morning, and have a good week.